Good evening. Will the members and our guests please take their seats? This meeting will now come to order. As all members have received a copy of the call of tonight's meeting, the reading of the call will be omitted. Will everyone please rise and join me in saying the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all. Welcome to the March meeting of the Greenwich representative town meeting. My name is Tom Byrne, RTM moderator. As all members have received a copy of the minutes of our January 27 meeting, the reading of the minutes will be omitted. I do have a correction to those minutes. John Eddy of District 8 was present at the meeting, was marked absent, so we will make that correction. Now, was there another change? Kip Bergweger?
Good evening fellow members. Item 6 in the minutes states that M. Michael Warner, Chairman of Finance Committee, made a motion to refer item number 6 to a subcommittee of Finance Retirement Board, which will be
Yeah, I'm wondering, can we turn these mics off?
Is this on now?
Thank you.
Well, the description of the action taken on item 6 is incorrect and it should read, Mr. Michael Warner, Chairman of the Finance Committee, made a motion to refer item number 6 to a Retirement Board Subcommittee of the Finance Committee, which shall be chaired by Carl R. Perrelli Minetti.
All right, so that is, Michael Warner made a motion to refer item 6 to a Retirement Board Subcommittee of the Finance Committee, which shall be chaired by Mr. Perrelli Minetti?
Correct.
All right. Is there a second to the motion to amend? That motion to amend by adding the language just referred to is now before us. We may adopt amendments upon unanimous consent. Is there any objection to that proposed amendment? Hearing none, that proposed amendment is adopted upon unanimous consent. Are there any other suggested changes to our proposed minutes? Hearing none and absent objection, the minutes as amended stand adopted upon unanimous Joan Caldwell, our moderator pro tem, would you care to say a few words about this wonderful work product that you pulled together for us and give us a little explanation of what happened this time?
It's on time. That's the important thing. I was afraid that it wouldn't get here in time for tonight's meeting, but we haven't. I would like to thank Peter Minarsky because when I went in and spoke to him about financing, I had financing for it. He said, "That's a town resource. We should pay for it. I'll find the money," and bless his heart, he did. So, we're buying our own directories, guys, and it's nice to do for the first time. The one thing I would like to say is that you've all got yours. The town hall staff received theirs today or tomorrow. I have some over here on the side, and I would like to ask each of the district chairs if they'd be kind enough to give me a hand in distributing them. Copies of the directories should go to all of the schools and to the libraries and to the museum and various other places in town that are really town functions. They are part of the overall group and they need to know who we are. So, the best way we can show them who we are is to hand-deliver to them a couple of directories for their use throughout the term. I've divvied them up. It's about three or four stops for each district, and it's very easy. And in cases, in the case like the Greenwich Library, we actually give them a supply so that through the years, they can hand out copies to people coming into the library wanting to know about the RTM. Finally, I would say to the district chairs, if there are new members coming in throughout the course of the coming 24 months, we have extra copies so that the new members will have a copy. Just let us know. If you can't get it from the town clerk, I know where the squirrel put them.
Mr. Von Keiseling, for what purpose do you rise?
Question to our moderator pro tem.
To you. What's your question?
Since they have now found the town budget finance money for our directories, are they going to find the town finance money for our town rules that they distribute to the membership?
We are working on that.
Thank you. Ever or not?
All right. Was there any other committee chair who had asked to be recognized at this point? All right, that brings us to the call of tonight's meeting. I informed our district and committee chairs that based upon the reports received, I would recommend tonight the following organization of our call. I will shortly designate for placement on our consent calendar, which is for consensus items, and if they remain on that calendar, we will hear no committee reports and no discussion on those. I will designate shortly items 6, 7, 8, 11, 13, 14, 23, and 24 for the consent calendar. I will recommend that we suspend the rules and combine for voting purposes items 1, 16, and 19, which would leave to consider separately items 2, 3, 4, 5, 9, 10, 12, 15, 17, 18, 20, 21, 22, and 25. And nine of those, I believe, are, we anticipate motions to postpone, nine of those separate items. So, not quite as bad as it appears at first blush. At this time, I will now pursuant to our rules designate the following eight items for our consent calendar. And if they remain, this is all that you will hear tonight about those items. The first is item number 6. This is the appointment of Nancy Raymer to be an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2017. The next consent calendar item, 7, the appointment of Andrew Fox to be an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2017. Item 8, the appointment of Peter Levy to be a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission with a term expiring March 31, 2017. Item 11, the appointment of Arthur Delmhurst to be a member of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals for a term expiring March 31, 2018. Item 13, the appointment of Larry Larson to be a member of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals with a term expiring March 31, 2018. Item 14, the appointment of Kenneth Rogazinski to be an alternate member of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals with a term expiring March 31, 2018. Item 23, the appointment of Peter Finkbiner to be a member of the Flood and Erosion Control Board with a term expiring December 31, 2017. And the final item that I will designate for our consent calendar tonight, item 24, the appointment of Mark Weller to be an alternate member of the Flood and Erosion Control Board with a term expiring March 31, 2017. Are there any objections to the designation of those items for our consent calendar? Hearing none, will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Consent calendar items 6, 7, 8, 11, 13, 14, 23, and 24, and proceed to poll your delegation. I will now suggest, wait a minute.
Are you giving us the last message of the last morning yet? You have to be able to explain it for those.
All right. Thank you for reminding me. Anyone who was not present at our January meeting and has not otherwise been sworn in to the current RTM term needs to come up and be sworn in by Carmella Butkins, our town clerk. So, before you do cast a vote, please take care of that before you mark the voting card. At this point, I will recommend that we combine for voting purposes items 1, 16, and 19. In order to do that, it requires a motion to suspend the rules. Is there such a motion? It has been moved and seconded to suspend the rules to combine items 1, 16, and 19 for voting purposes. The motion to suspend the rules is not debatable, and it requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of suspending the rules and combining items 1, 16, and 19 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion has carried. So, we will now take up those three items, vote, take one vote on them, but items that are combined, we will get full committee reports, have full discussion on the combined items. After we dispose of them, we would then take up the remaining separate items. So, item number 1 is a resolution appointing Lyle Gibbons to be a member of the Harbor Management Commission for a term expiring March 31, 2016. This item was before us in January. We postponed it to this meeting, so it is now currently before us. May we have the reports of the committees that considered it? Candace Garthwaite, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. The Appointments Committee interviewed Lyle Gibbons on January 28. All districts were represented. Lyle represented the 151st District in the Connecticut House of Representatives for 12 years and is well aware of the complexities of the waterfront issues in Greenwich. She sees the creation of the Harbor Management Plan as putting various puzzle pieces together, including the need for Greenwich to have more clout with the state. She would like to see coordination with the Greenwich Plan of Conservation and Development and see the town allocate resources to create more public access to Greenwich's 28 miles of waterfront. The vote was 12-0-0.
Thank you. Karen Sodicon, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Good evening. The Parks and Rec Committee interviewed Lyle Gibbons last Tuesday, March 4. She is extremely strong nominee for the Harbor Management Commission, as you can imagine. As said, she has served six terms in the Connecticut State Legislature as a state representative of the 150th District in Connecticut. She's been a ranking member on the Human Services Committee for 10 years and acted as the Assistant Minority Leader. Prior to that, she served on the Board of Education for eight years, including its chair for three. She's always been involved with waterfront issues with her constituents. She's interested in serving on the Harbor Management Commission because she likes developing policy. She will have an opportunity to continue working with our town. She has an extensive experience with multiple people and organizations and has dealt with the DEEP and the governor. She knows several of the other candidates for the commission and looks forward to working with them. She feels the most important role of the commission is to develop a harbor management plan, which would include the entire waterfront and water territory under the town's jurisdiction. The plan should focus on docks, moorings, dredging, safety issues, state rules and regulations. She expects the plan could be completed by the end of the year, as much of the information is already available in other models of other plans, and this would help the commission determine how extensive they want the plan to be for Greenwich. While she says she's not a boater, she lives by the water and has an appreciation of all of the water, including its plant life. And lastly, she feels that a harbor management plan will enable the town to handle its own water issues rather than having the state dictate policy to the town. Again, the vote was 11-0-0 with District 2 absent.
Thank you. Discussion on item 1. Item 16 now comes before us. Candace Garthwaite with that resolution.
Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed member of the Labor Contracts Committee for the term expiring 12-31-15, M. Michael Warner.
Thank you. That being offered on behalf of one of our committees, it does not require a second and is now before us. May we have the committee reports on item 16? Who will we start with? Candace Garthwaite, you want to?
Just give me a second to...
Okay.
Okay. The Appointments Committee interviewed Mr. Warner on February 4. All districts were represented. Mr. Warner is a member of District 3 and Chair of the Finance Committee. He is deeply concerned about the cost of pensions. Mr. Warner, a human resources professional for many years, brings deep understanding of benefits programs and contract negotiations. He is well-versed in labor relations and the importance of contract language. He is very cautious about the risks of binding arbitration. He does not see a conflict, but rather an advantage, that he is the finance chair. We voted by ballot, and he received nine votes.
Thank you. Do we have the Finance Committee report on this? Is Mr. Perrelli Minetti here? No Finance Committee report?
No.
Pardon? Reporting on Mr. Warner. Michael Warner, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Apologize, Mr. Moderator. During this portion of our Finance Committee meeting, I gave up the chair to the Vice Chair, Rob Perrelli Minetti, who managed that part, this part of the meeting. Dealing with item 10, there was some discussion of background and labor contracts issues, and the resulting vote was 11-0-0.
Thank you.
Surprise.
Discussion on item 16. Item 19 now comes before us.
Lucia Jansen. Resolved that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed alternate member of the Labor Contracts Committee for the term expiring 12-31-15, Lucia D. Jansen.
Thank you. That being offered on behalf of our Appointments Committee does not require a second and is currently before us. Ms. Garthwaite with the report of the Appointments Committee.
The Appointments Committee interviewed Lucia Jansen February 4. All districts were represented. Lucia is a delegate from District 7 and chairs the Budget Overview Committee. A former technology professional, she has been a full-time volunteer since 2005 and is devoted to researching and studying finance and labor contract issues. She knows how to synthesize web research and gain valuable information on trends and challenges in contract negotiations. She believes that to attract the best teachers, especially those that are in demand, like science and math teachers, changes will be needed in teacher contracts. She is concerned about public safety employee contracts that add, that contain language that could add significant cost to the town budget. The committee voted by ballot, and the vote was nine votes.
Thank you. Mr. Warner with the Finance Committee report.
The Finance Committee, at the Finance Committee, everyone was present except District 1. Once again, Rob Perrelli Minetti took over the chair for this piece of the discussion, and Lucia Jansen's background was discussed. Not too much discussion was required because we all know Lucia's interests, backgrounds, and thoughts and opinions on the issues of labor contracts and budgeting and cost-saving issues. As a result of the interview, Lucia was approved 11-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on item 19. That brings us to the end of our combined calendar. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, combine calendar items 1, 16, and 19, and proceed to poll your delegation? All right. That now brings us to the separate items. The first is item number 2, which was postponed from our January meeting, so item number 2, which is the appointment of Bernard Armstrong to be an alternate member of the Harbor Management Commission with a term expiring March 31, 2017, is currently before us. May we have a committee, I understand we're going to move to postpone this, Candace Garthwaite, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
The background here, I believe we talked about this at the last meeting, is that Mr. Armstrong nominated as an alternate to the Harbor Management Commission. There is a conflict with minority representation because two members of the same party were nominated. Mr. Armstrong was asked to change his party affiliation, which he did do, to unaffiliated. That was, that was completed January 27. The state statute does read that there is a three-month waiting period from the date of the change of affiliation. Therefore, the Appointments Committee did not take up this item, and I would like to make a motion that we postpone item number 2 to the June call.
Okay.
Or to the June meeting.
Before I accept that, Ms. Sodicon, I see you sitting there. Did you want to say anything on item number 2? No. All right. It has now been moved, is there a second to postpone? All right, it has been moved and seconded to postpone item 2 to our June call. I can take a voice vote on this. All those in favor of postponing item 2 to our June call, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, that motion postponed has carried. Item number 3 was another January resolution postponed to our March meeting. This is a resolution to appoint Gary Silberberg to be an alternate member of the Harbor Management Commission with a term expiring March 31, 2016. That resolution is now before us. May we have the reports of the committees that considered it? Candace Garthwaite, Chair of our Appointments Committee.
The Appointments Committee interviewed Gary Silberberg on January 28. All districts were represented. Mr. Silberberg was a member of the Selectmen's Harbor Advisory Board, and he does own a real estate brokerage firm in Greenwich and understands the economic value of the waterfront. He sees important issues ahead for the Harbor Management Commission, including safety of navigation, dredging and environmental compliance, coastal management, and economic development. And he was full of many creative ideas about how to create a public access and some economic stimulation on the waterfront. Our vote was 11-1-0. District 8 was concerned about the candidate's lack of familiarity with the state requirements to set goals for harbor preservation.
Thank you. Karen Sodicon, Chair of our Parks and Recreation Committee.
Our committee interviewed Gary Silberberg on March 4. He has an extensive background that makes him a great candidate for the commission. He currently serves on the Greenwich Conservation Commission, the Greenwich Tree Conservancy, the Greenwich Chapter of the American Red Cross, and is the acting chairman and former vice chairman of the Selectmen's Harbor Management Advisory Committee, and he was a member of the first Selectmen's Coastal Resources Advisory Committee. He also worked on the committee to develop the Harbor Management Ordinance and has taught many boating courses and is an avid sailor himself. His professional background is in real estate. Gary has not worked with the other nominees for the commission, but he knows Peter Quigley and Lyle Gibbons very well and looks forward to working with them to develop the Harbor Management Plan. He feels the plan should only take a few months to develop, again, as there are other model plans available to the commission. He feels the plan should focus on safety, dredging, coastal management, which would be better use of town-owned waterfront properties. He's developed several reports addressing waterfront issues, such as the Myannis River Channel, safety concerns with Greenwich Harbor, et cetera, which he shared with us during his interview. Our vote was 11-0-0 with District 2 absent.
Thank you. Discussion on item 3. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number 3, and proceed to poll your delegation? I have the result of the vote on the consent calendar items. Those were items 6, 7, 8, 11, 13, 14, 23, and 24. Those in favor, 169. Opposed, 1. Abstaining, 1. The consent calendar items have carried. Item number 4 now comes before us. Mr. Pruner, Vice Chair of our Education Committee.
Good evening. We met on Monday, March 3.
Do we, do we have the resolution? Is there anyone to present item number 4 to us? Mr. Pruner, you can do that.
Okay.
So, if you would just describe what the motion is, move it, and we'll get it seconded and...
Item number 4 is a motion to accept a grant of $90,246 from the state of Connecticut to support common core issues, and otherwise appears as in the call.
All right. Is there a second? It has been moved, item number 4 has been moved and seconded and is now before us. Mr. Pruner with the report of our Education Committee.
Thank you. As I said, we met on Monday, March 3 to consider this item. The smarter, balanced assessment system will be done on computers. The state has a program to help support the additional cost of the networking and the computers. The Board of Education made an application for that. Barbara O'Neil and Mrs. Irene Parisi, the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Professional Learning, explained the purposes of the grant, and we voted 11-0-0 to accept it. District 5 absent.
Thank you. Mr. Warner, Chair of our Finance Committee.
Good evening, fellow members. The Finance Committee took this up on March 3 as well. We had all members present except District 1. We did not have a representative from the Board of Education. We did note that this is for wireless deployment so that, as Mr. Pruner said, they can complete their assessment system. The vote at Finance was 11-0-0 to postpone the issue, so at the proper time, Mr. Moderator, I'll make a motion to postpone this until...
All right. There being no further committee reports, you may make that motion then.
I move we postpone this until the April meeting.
All right. That motion to postpone being made on behalf of one of our committees does not require a second. This is a motion to postpone item 4 to our April meeting. Is that correct, Mr. Warner?
Yeah.
Okay. Discussion on that motion to postpone. Mr. Pruner, Vice Chair of our Education Committee.
Our committee had some discussions with Dr. Parisi, as I mentioned, the head of instruction. She indicated that it would be beneficial for us to receive this money earlier rather than postponing it till the April meeting. The state's given us money. How bad can it be? Thank you.
Further discussion on the motion to postpone offered by our Finance Committee. Mr. Von Keiseling, District 8. Mr. Von Keiseling, District Eight.
Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Moderator, I very much am in favor of no show, no go as a general rule in committees. I understand in our district it was asked the question, what harm would there be in postponing? And normally, when there's no great harm, it's better to be safe and postpone. I gather from the information we got in District Eight that there is some time sensitivity in this grant and its implementation. I would point to you that this is part of the process of bringing our school and education system into a new millennium by using digital learning and all of the things that go with it. It's a major shift. This, while it's brought under for one reason, actually is neutral in the sense that it's used for all educational things. By increasing our digital access in our public schools, we increase the ability to move into the digital learning much more quickly. Even if Core and all that fails, this will still have a great advantage. I would like to ask through you, Mr. Moderator, a representative of the Board of Ed or the administration, if there is any harm in delaying this.
Well, I think that's the problem. There is no representative. Is there? All right. Would you care to respond, please?
Good evening. Irene Parisi, Assistant Superintendent for Greenwich Public Schools. Sorry. I'm Irene Parisi, Assistant Superintendent for Greenwich Public Schools. I apologize. It was an oversight on our part, so we had missed the finance meeting, but we were there at 8 o'clock for the Education Committee meeting. This is time-sensitive, and we do have to expend the funds by June 30, and we cannot carry over any of the dollars. And the intent of the grant was to support the implementation of common core state standards as well as the assessment itself, the smarter balanced assessment, which will assess those common core state standards. And there is a plan already in place so that we can, once you approve and we can have access to the funds, we'll be able to turn this around quickly for our schools.
Thank you. Further discussion on the Finance Committee motion to postpone. This being a procedural issue, I will, in the first instance, call for a voice vote. If you want to put this item off to our March, to our April meeting, you should vote in favor of the motion to postpone. If you want to take it up tonight, you should vote no on the vote I'm now calling for. All those in favor of the motion to postpone item four to our April meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion has failed. Further discussion on item four. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards, item number four, and proceed to poll your delegation? I have the result of the vote on the three combined items. Those were items 1, 16, and 19. Those in favor, 175. Opposed, 7. Abstaining, 0. The three combined items have carried. Item five now comes before us. Peter Tessie, our First Selectman. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, and ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. Resolve that the representative town meeting hereby approves the renewal of the amended lease with the Greenwich Arts Council, Inc., for the Old Town Hall located at 299 Greenwich Avenue for a term of 10 years from April 15, 2014, to April 14, 2024. And disappears on the call.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item five has been moved and seconded. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Mr. Moderator, ladies and gentlemen, this request for a 10-year lease with a right to renew for another 10 years until 2034 is returning to the RTM for its consideration after this resolution was withdrawn by its proponents in October of 2010. Since that time, the Greenwich Arts Council has been occupying the premises as a holdover tenant. The committee last Monday evening heard from Amina Ahmad, Assistant Town Attorney, who highlighted the changes to the lease from the one that was presented to the Legislative and Rules Committee in 2010 before it was withdrawn. The most notable changes are that the Arts Council will now pay for all the janitorial services in the building. There are greater insurance protections than in the prior lease, and in paragraph 14, there is a 10-year renewal option for the Arts Council. There was no such right to renew for an additional 10 years in the 2010 lease. Also, after the three-and-a-half-year delay since this lease was withdrawn by the Select Board, the lease term is not from 2010 until 2020, but is instead from now until 2024, and with the renewal option. So the GAC will now have the premises until 2034 if we approve this lease as drafted. The RTM should know that this lease is approved with the renewal clause, if it is approved with the renewal clause, there is a good chance the RTM would not again consider this lease until 2034. The Law Department confirmed at our meeting that unless the Board of Selectmen or the GAC chooses to make a change to the renewed lease, then it need not come back to the RTM for approval or rejection in 2024. Speaking on behalf of the Arts Council were Paul Masterkarnik, Executive Director, as well as Laura Cunningham, the Arts Council President. When Mr. Karnik was asked whether the 10-year renewal term was something that the GAC had bargained for, he replied that the GAC had not asked for this provision, but the Board of Selectmen had unilaterally made the decision to provide this 10-year right to renew to the GAC. Mr. Masterkarnik was asked whether the right to renew was of critical importance to the GAC. He replied that it was not. However, later in the meeting, Ms. Cunningham stated that having the right to renew would be advantageous to the Arts Council. Mr. Masterkarnik explained to the committee that the GAC rents to six nonprofit organizations, from which the GAC receives approximately $86,000 per year in rent. It was acknowledged that the rent being received is below fair market rents for a place on Greenwich Avenue, but the GAC proponents believe this is appropriate, given the cultural benefits provided to town residents. It was also learned that there are three, at least three, for-profit entities that sublet. These entities provide yoga classes, dance instruction, and music lessons. Mr. Masterkarnik estimated the rent received from these for-profit entities totals approximately $20,000 per year. It was unclear at the time of our meeting whether or not GAC was receiving this rent or if some of the nonprofit entities were receiving it, but we later found out, based on law department information provided to us, that all of this money goes to the GAC. So if Mr. Karnik's estimates are accurate, then the GAC is receiving a total of about $106,000 per year from not-for-profits and for-profit entities as the master tenant for this space. We also learned that the license agreements that are provided to these subtenants do provide insurance coverage to the town that protect us, but there is a provision in these licensing agreement that would seem to indicate that the licensees could opt out of insurance coverage, but we didn't see a lease that provided for that. There were some people in our committee that made the observation that the town could make better use of this building than providing it to the Arts Council for free. However, members of the GAC told us that the property is deed restricted, to be used only for the arts and could therefore not be leased commercially. However, no one from the Arts Council had a copy of the deed at our meeting. Later on, we were able to obtain a copy of the deed from the Law Department, and while the donors of the property, who were Mr. and Mrs. Bruce, did provide in the deed that they requested that the premises be used for the arts, the language in the deed is actually far broader than that. It does provide, there are any number of uses that could be provided for in this building. Our committee then took up and made some minor changes to the lease. These are wordsmithing changes, and neither the Arts Council nor the Law Department had any objection to those, so at the appropriate time, I'll make those changes. A motion was then made to prohibit the subletting of Arts Council space to for-profit entities. However, that motion did not obtain a second, so no vote was taken. Then came a motion to delete paragraph 14 of the lease, which is the lease renewal clause, which would provide the Arts Council with the absolute right to have an additional 10 years, beginning with the end of this lease, so it would be for the period of 2024 to 2034. Our vote on the motion to delete the 10-year renewal term was five in favor, six opposed, with District Three absent. Those voting in favor of deleting the renewal term were from Districts 1, 2, 5, 7, and 12. We then voted on the resolution and the lease, as both were revised. Our vote as legal order was 10 in favor, one opposed, with District 7 voting opposed and District 3 absent. Our vote on the merits was 7 in favor, 4 opposed, again with District 3 absent.
Thank you. Mr. Warner, the report of our Finance Committee.
Good evening, fellow members. There are certain advantages to following Mr. Wells. He gave a thorough background of the issues resolving around this lease. We found in Finance, there were two issues that took our time. One was the 10-year extension, that it appeared that the people who were before us, Mr. Crery and Paul Masterkarnik, had no problem with eliminating the additional 10 years in the lease. And in taking a vote at the Finance Committee, we voted 10-1-0 for eliminating that extra 10-year extension, and at the proper time, I'll make a motion to do that. We had a more controversial piece in discussing the sublease provisions, which wound up in somewhat detailed legal issues, which you may hear more about. But fundamentally, at the end of the somewhat technical argument, the committee voted 3-8-0 for not changing the provision as it now stands. So what you're seeing is the Finance Committee is not going to make a recommendation to change any sublease provisions, but we do think the term is too long. Thank you.
Thank you. Why don't we, at this point, take up what should be less controversial, and those are the amendments offered by our Legislative and Rules Committee. Mr. Wells.
Thank you. The changes, the first three changes are all to the lease and not to the resolution. On page 4 of the lease, in subparagraph II, after the word "origin," we inserted the word "religion." And on page 14 of the lease, we deleted the last sentence in its entirety and inserted in its place, "This lease shall not be assigned." And then we made revisions to the lease so that in each case where the phrase "renewal lease" appears, we deleted the word "renewal." That's because in some places in the lease, it talks about it being a lease, other places it's a renewal lease, and the people in our committee didn't think this really truly is a renewal lease. It's a new lease. And then, in order to conform the lease and the resolution in the call, in the call, in the second line, the second sentence, or the second line starts out with the phrase "renewal of the amended," we deleted those three words so that it reads, "Resolve that the representative town meeting hereby approves the lease with the Greenwich Arts Council." The rest of the resolution is, as it appears in the call.
All right. Did you take out amended in the resolution?
Yeah, we took out renewal of the amended.
Okay. All right. Do we need to go over those proposed changes?
No.
All right. Is there, that being offered on behalf of our Legislative and Rules Committee, it does not require a second, and that motion to amend is currently before us. Is there any objection to those proposed amendments to the lease and the resolution of item five?
No.
Hearing none and absent objection, that motion to amend is adopted upon unanimous consent.
The Finance Committee makes a motion to delete section 14 lease renewal from the lease as it's written.
All right. Thank you. That being offered on behalf of our Finance Committee, it does not require a second. It is debatable. Discussion on the Finance Committee motion to delete that provision. This is paragraph 14 lease renewal. Erv Porter, District 6. And I invite any interested speakers on this motion to amend. It is a motion to amend by deleting to come forward.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm not here to carry you through the agonies of the Lease Committee. I'd just remind you all that it was this particular lease that we all paid attention to that caused the formation of the Joint Subcommittee on Leases, Joint Subcommittee being between Finance and Legislative and Rules. You've heard an eloquent representation, as usual, from Mr. Wells. I'd just like to make one supportive point in asking you to vote against the extension, the automatic extension of another 10 years. I'm reading from a memo from Bill Day to John Crery. Bill is in the assessor's office and focuses particularly on what rent values are on the avenue. And I'll just read just a very brief portion from this. Currently, second-floor office rents on the avenue range anywhere from $35 to $65 per square foot, with most trending toward the lower end of the range, given today's market. Given the current layout and quality of the subject space and restrictive covenant pertaining to the hours of operation, that is, the hours of operation of the senior center, and juxtaposed with its superior location, he estimates that the market value would be $40 to $45 per square foot. If you put in factors that Bill uses in considering what the appropriate assessed value is of leased property on the avenue, he comes up with a multiplier that basically says, on a net present value basis, that the defined lease area of the property would have a value between $7 and $8 million. Now, that's for the whole period of the lease. As contrasted with what you heard from Mr. Wells with regard to what the value of the lease is, cost of the lease is, for those that are in that property currently, and that, of course, includes those that are deemed to be for-profit rather than not-for-profits. We had Mrs. Cunningham at the District 6 meeting and specifically asked the question with regard to the extension of an additional 10 years. She said at that meeting, as you have heard other meetings, that it was not critical. I therefore ask you to think about one thing that caused the Joint Subcommittee to be formed in the first place, and that was, what were the market values for town properties? Not that we're saying that we shouldn't afford nonprofits an opportunity to benefit from the town properties. That's not at all what the Lease Committee suggested. The bottom line is, though, that there seems to be a significant disparity, and I'm sorry, but I can't, in my crystal ball, understand what the Civic Center will look at 20 years from now. I can see maybe what it would look like 10 years from now, but I can't see what it'll look like in 20 years. Therefore, I suggest that you support Mr. Warner's motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to amend. Mr. Von Keiseling, District Eight.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Ladies and gentlemen, I'd rather speak after we flushed out all the objections, but I think I'll speak now instead. This has been a long journey over many years, that whole lease. We were reminded by Mr. Porter. We went through that whole lease examination because of this lease. It seemed to focus more on boat clubs, but it was a generic concern. The main reason that we passed a resolution of this body some three, four years ago was because we were trying to use the power of the RTM to get the Board of Selectmen to create a consistent, clear, measurable method by which leases were given out in this town. That's where this all started. In the process of this, over a number of years, in the wrangling back and forth and all the things, the details that went on, the... all the things, the details that went on, the Board of Selectmen did come out with a policy for leases in this town, as this body had asked for. It wasn't quite what the Subcommittee had looked for, perhaps, but it was a clear, consistent policy. In that policy, if you notice where the leases that have come to us since then, there have been renewal clauses in it. Where there is a new lease, there is generally a renewal clause in it when it is a significant capital building or investment. This is their policy. It's a little bit like that old joke, careful what you pray for, you got it. This is their policy. Now, if you're going to say, "Well, we don't like that, and we're going to change our minds again, and we're going the other way, and we're going to treat this on a special case," I find that grossly ironic because the Selectmen said in their policy they will treat each as a case-by-case basis, not as a generic policy. So once again, you're objecting to what you asked for and got. I think you're looking a little confused if you postpone this or remove this item of renewal. It is a standard part of the policy. Make up your minds. You either want the policy or you don't want the policy. I therefore ask you seriously to act with some probity and reject this amendment.
Rob Perrelli Minetti, District Twelve.
I was also the, I want to speak to some of the things that Mr. Von Kaiserling said. There were actually two committees that looked at leases. I was the co-chair of the committee that produced the seventy-plus-page report on all of the town leases, which was precipitated by the Arts Council leases consideration back in two thousand twelve. That committee produced a report which the RTM adopted, if not unanimously, virtually unanimously. And in that report, we did not consider a renewal term for this lease because there was not a renewal term proposed in two thousand ten. I would point out that to say that you consider each lease separately, as the Selectmen did, does not create a policy to put a renewal clause in every lease. I think that that's a somewhat confused view. I think it would be appropriate, in the case of the Arts Council lease, in whatever form it is approved by the RTM, that we revisit this lease in ten years. I think the notion that this, that situation will not change at all in the next twenty years is a very unrealistic assumption. One of the things that was not clear before the RTM lease report that we brought to the RTM in two thousand twelve was that the only body in the town of Greenwich that has the authority to approve leases, with the exception of certain leases that Parks and Rec can approve, is the RTM. And this is the power of the RTM to approve leases. You are the only body that can determine whether the town leases property or not. So I would urge you to support the removal of the renewal clause from this lease. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to postpone.
One more question.
I'm, I'm sorry. The motion to amend by deleting the lease renewal provision. I know, I know. I'm in the wrong district. All right. Bernard. How do I forget? Bernard Schneider, yes.
I'll be brief and practical, I hope. The argument for the Mayanis Boat Clubs' extension was very clear. They made what I thought was a persuasive argument that they were going to engage in capital projects who would extend into the future, and therefore they needed a twenty-year lease to assure them that the project would be financially reasonable. Adult Daycare made the same point. They were engaged in capital projects, and in order to attract donors over the life of their lease, they too needed the comfort of a twenty-year lease. I have heard no arguments, no position by the Greenwich Arts Council. If there is a specific reason that they want and the comfort of a twenty-year lease, I would like to hear that reason and perhaps be persuaded. But I have heard none, so again, I would vote to take out the extension provision.
Thank you. Further discussion on the motion to amend. Will the district chairs, now, this is what we are voting on, not on the lease itself, but whether to take out paragraph fourteen, the lease renewal. If you want that taken out, you should vote yes on the vote I am now calling for. If you want to leave it in, you should vote no. So will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Finance Committee, motion to amend the lease by deleting paragraph fourteen. We will need to await the result of this vote before disposing of Item Five. So I ask that you expedite, I ask our district chairs to please expedite the vote on this motion to amend. I do have the result of the vote on Item Three. Item Three was a resolution to appoint Gary Silverberg, an alternate member of the Harbor Management Commission. Those in favor, one seventy-three; opposed, five; abstaining, one. That item has carried. I also have the vote on Item Four, which was the appropriation of ninety thousand-plus dollars for the Greenwich Board of Education. Those in favor, one seventy-two; opposed, seven; abstaining, zero. Item Four has carried. All right. At this point, we will, well, what we can do is have further discussion on Item Five. Are there any individuals? I do have some names. We can continue, I ask that the voting that is currently underway be conducted quietly so that we can continue with the business of the meeting. Margaret Freiberg, did you want to address Item Five?
I'd like to make an additional motion with regard to Item Five.
Pardon me?
I'd like to make another motion. Is it time to do that?
Yep. All right. While we are voting, we can continue to deal with Item Five, and I understand that Margaret Freiberg of District Seven has yet another motion addressed to Item Five.
I move that the body of paragraph ten of the Greenwich Arts Council proposed lease before us be deleted, and that the body of paragraph eleven of the two thousand Greenwich Arts Council lease be substituted in its place. This will conform the proposed lease to the status quo.
All right. I did not get that. Could you just repeat that? What are we doing with paragraph ten?
Change the, the language inside paragraph ten.
Into the mic.
This is to change the wording in paragraph ten to what had been the wording in paragraph eleven of the two thousand version of the Greenwich Arts Council lease.
Well, we need to know what that is.
And that read as follows. "Subletting and Assignment: The council shall not sublet the demised premises or any portion thereof, nor shall the lease be assigned. If the premises shall be deserted or vacated, the first selectman may declare the lease in default, and this lease shall expire and terminate."
And your motion is to substitute what you just read in its entirety for what is currently paragraph ten?
Correct.
All right. Do you have a copy of that language for me? The proposed motion is to delete what is in paragraph ten of the lease before us and substitute this following language, which was the language of the subletting and assignment provision of the lease that has, the most recent lease. And this is the language. "The council shall not sublet the demised premises or any portion thereof, nor shall the lease be assigned. If the premises shall be deserted or vacated, the first selectman may declare the lease in default, and this lease shall expire and terminate." Is there a second to the motion to delete the current paragraph ten and substitute that language in its place? It has been moved and seconded to amend the lease by deleting paragraph ten and substituting what has been read in, in its place. Is there any need to read it yet again? Hearing none. Discussion on the Freiberg motion to amend. Mr. Perrelli Minetti, speaking on the pending motion to amend.
Yes, I'm speaking in favor of the motion. The background to this is that there has never been in the lease a right to sublet. What there has been, and frankly, what we would like to see continue, is a policy that was put into place in nineteen eighty-one by Frank Keegan, who was then Director of Parks and Recreation, which permitted the Arts Council to manage and administer the space for the town, but it was on behalf of the town and it was not for their own right, pure right. Everything is subject to the town's approval. There is no other lease of all, I mean, I was the co-chair of the Lease Committee that evaluated all the leases in two thousand and eleven and twelve. There is no other lease of these town leases that permit subletting, with the exception of the commercial lease for Greenwich Plaza, and that's a completely different animal. We're paying, we're charging commercial rates for that space to the, to the tenant. So this is creating a very distinct precedent where the RTM would be delegating to a third party, who is not the RTM, not just the ability to administer the property, but the ability to create legally cognizable estates. And I know that sounds technical, but it means they can create, you're letting somebody that isn't the RTM create legal rights in town property. I think that would be a grave mistake to create that precedent, especially when it's perfectly possible to amend the lease in such a way that takes the nineteen eighty-one policy, updates it, and allows, basically allows the status quo to continue, but without creating any kind of, of new rights in any of the entities that use this property. Thank you.
Further discussion on the Freiberg motion to amend. Mr. Mike Harris of the Greenwich Arts Council.
Mr. Moderator, members of the RTM. My name is Mike Harris. I'm a member of the Board of the Greenwich Arts Council. From the very beginning of the leases of this building to the Arts Council, it has, the whole theory was to make space on the second and third floors of the building, and that it would be available to others who were working in the field of the arts. It was understood that the Arts Council would charge a below-market rent for subtenants. The rents were intended only to cover the costs associated with maintaining the building, which was the responsibility of the Arts Council. I have personally had conversations with Frank Keegan and with every first selectman who has held office since nineteen eighty. It was Frank's clear recollection that the intent from the beginning was that the space would be shared and that rent would be collected by the Arts Council. Each selectman I spoke with knew of the sharing of expenses, but didn't have any idea that there was a prohibition against subleasing right there in the lease. We happened to see it five years ago, when we started to talk with the Selectmen about renewing the lease, called it to their attention so that the new lease would have the proper wording. I hope it's clear at this point that there was never any intent to deceive anybody. It was a matter of practice now for thirty-four years. Let me also make the point that there are checks and balances in place in the proposed lease. Our right to sublet is, and I quote, "subject to approval by the town of the proposed subleases and rental terms. The town shall have the right to audit the council's accounts and the income generated by such subletting." Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on the Freiberg motion to amend. Actually, before I call for the next speaker, I thank our district chairs for conducting the vote on the Finance Committee motion to amend expeditiously. I have the result of that vote. This is on the motion to delete the ten-year renewal provision. Those in favor, one forty-two; opposed, thirty-five; abstaining, zero. That motion to amend has carried. Further discussion now on the motion relating to paragraph ten. Mr. Adelberg, behalf of the Greenwich Arts Council.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, members of the town meeting, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak with you. I've known to many people from my work with the United Way and countless other town initiatives, initiatives and efforts, but in fact, as the moderator expressed, I am here as a member of the Board of the Greenwich Arts Council, and I will tell you personally that, in fact, while community service and many other town efforts are, in fact, my avocation and most of my hours, it is, in fact, the arts that complete me as a person. So I am standing here again as a member of the Arts Council Board to urge you to please support the lease as now amended with the ten-year extension taken out, but as presented by the Law Department and approved by the Board of Selectmen. We, we take very seriously, and I personally take very seriously, as a resident, the, the town's effort and desire to make sure that all town properties are provided for the town's highest and best use, and in fact, for the benefit of the Greenwich community. And in fact, that is, as we expressed at the committee meetings that we attended, what the Brucees intended in providing this building to the town of Greenwich. A little bit of a correction, there was some misunderstanding about whether it was solely for the arts, and in fact, it is not solely for the arts, but it is, in fact, for the town's use. I believe it is clear that it cannot be actually used for rent and put on the, the open market. However, I also want to say that we, we truly appreciate the fact that we are in this amazing facility, at the town's pleasure, and, and don't take it for granted. Throughout the course of the past four years, as we've operated on a month-to-month basis, it has clearly been our desire to have the longer-term lease, but in fact, we cooperated fully with all town processes, and even in the development of the lease that you have before you tonight, it is not something that was put together by the Arts Council. It was, in fact, put together by the Town Law Department. I sat at a couple of committee meetings as Mr. Crary spoke about the fact that it had been approved in terms of risk management, had, in fact, increased the requirements, in fact, about insurance, and something we've agreed to pretty much everything that we've been asked for. We've tried to be the best citizens that we can, and in fact, we exist to bring the arts to the Greenwich community, and I will tell you, as a board member, I'm extremely proud of the fact that we do this on an incredibly tight budget, with a tiny but amazingly dedicated creative staff and an amazing group of board members, and all of our partners who, in fact, sublease space in the building as per our mission. So please, I urge you to approve this, this lease and let us get on with our mission, which is to provide exceptional artistic opportunities to the greater Greenwich community. Thank you.
Further discussion on the pending motion to amend. Our, our custom is not to allow anyone to speak twice before everyone has had a chance to speak once.
Okay, if someone else would like, I just wanted to-
So, Mr. Bergweger, District Eight.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I would just like to point out that although Mr. Perrelli Minetti's comment that the sublease is a legally cognizable thing is correct, is subject to the terms of the lease. And it states in the lease that the subleases are to be approved by the town, both the lesssee and the rental term. So it's not being delegated to a third party, the purpose, the power to sublet. It is subject to town approval. And allowing the Arts Council to, to do subletting will further its mission of supporting the arts in the town. Do we want the town to make all the decisions as to which art, which cultural entity in town is going to be able to utilize space? That'll have, that, I don't know that the town is as well-qualified to administer that as the Arts Council. as the Arts Council. And I would oppose the motion, and I would also note that this motion was made in the Legislative and Rules Committee and did not receive a second. Thank you.
Mr. Schneider, speaking on the pending motion to amend regarding paragraph 10 of the lease.
Thank you. I'm still kind of new around here, so I'm still a bit feeling my way.
Are you just a Southern lawyer, too?
I only play one on television. Thank you. I think the issue is a practical one, and it's very simple, and that is, who controls the space at the Greenwich Art Center, a town asset? For example, if there's a vacancy in the space now, who gets to decide among the various competing good uses, and there are many here, to make that decision? If you believe that the people or the group best able to make that decision, to decide among the various arts groups as to who uses that space, then you should let them make the decision. But they're only human, and they have their own ways of looking at things. So it's a practical question. Who gets to use this valuable space? Do we decide, we beating the selectmen and the RTM, or do we want to delegate that right to the Greenwich Arts Council? It's a practical question, to my mind, not necessarily a legal one. Thank you.
Thank you. David Dutchen, District 10.
I fear that we're, as an RTM, and we do have the power to approve or reject leases of this type, that I fear we're beginning to micromanage a process that has been going on for a while, and although there was discussion about setting a dangerous precedent by having the sublease clause that's in here now, it turns out that in fact, this particular process, a word from Mr. Harris, has been going on for decades. And in fact, although the language of the lease didn't provide for it, in fact, there has been this process of subleasing going on for quite some time, and indeed, that appears to be an important part of the business model of the Arts Council. And if we in fact, go back and reinsert this prohibition, we are jeopardizing the business model of the Arts Council, which has functioned over the years. I'm also concerned about the idea of the fact that we are already letting the Arts Council allow people into that various location to provide classes or whatnot on a form of a license, in any event, and I really wouldn't want to be the one to make the distinction between a sublease and a license.
Thank you. Further discussion on the Freiberg motion to amend. Mr. Pirelli Minetti.
I'd like to correct some misconceptions, and that is, by approving this change, you're not destroying their business model, you're not changing the status quo of the way they've done business for the past 30 years. What you're doing is you're saying that they're going to have to adhere to the policy that was put in place in 1981 with respect to these things, and that they are doing this on behalf of the town, and they're not actually subletting. They can license the use, they can let somebody in for a month-to-month, as a month-to-month tenant, but they can't create a sublease. And I think that you actually do the Arts Council no harm by approving this. In fact, the fact that we're here tonight discussing this at all is because we have negotiations to try to fix the lease. By putting in language that would codify that 1981 proposal up-to-date, failed. The Arts Council wasn't willing to entertain that. So I would much prefer not to have had the stand-up and support emotion like this, but I do, and I think that it's very important for the RTM not to approve letting a third party actually create rights and sublet the properties. I think that it's critical that the RTM maintain its authority and to allow the Arts Council to license the use as they have done for 30 years. Nobody is objecting. I mean, Stuart Adelson said, "What a wonderful job the Arts Council does," and they do. I'm not criticizing the Arts Council. I'm not criticizing the work they do. What I'm saying is that they should continue to do things in a manner that they have without creating new rights. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, let's welcome Christian Talheim of District 6 for his first appearance before the body.
Thank you for having me. Yeah, I just had a question in regards to the subleasing that's been proposed or to be eliminated, and in regards to Mr. Bergweger's comment about the subleases are being subject to town approval. It wasn't clear to me whether or not -- or my impression from being at the Legislative and Rules Committee meeting was that the subleases for profit entities were on a very ad hoc basis, and therefore, I don't see how the town could in a timely manner approve or disapprove of the entities on an ad hoc basis. So I was just wondering if I could get some clarification on that matter. Thank you.
All right. Who are you looking for this clarification from?
Oh, Mr. Bergweger made the comment about the town being -- yeah, the town still -- the subleases still be subject to town approval, and I was just wondering if -- my impression from the Greenwich Arts Council was that a lot of the subleases were on an ad hoc basis, and I was just wondering how the town could approve that in a timely manner.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but I understood Mr. Bergweger simply to be saying the RTM is the town, so there's no delegation to any other party. Is that correct, Mr. Bergweger? That's all he's saying, that we are not -- that there was a claim made that this proposed paragraph 10 would delegate RTM authority, and what I understood Mr. Bergweger to say is that what it says here is, any sublet would be subject to approval by the town, which is true of any lease which involves the RTM.
The town meaning the RTM?
Pardon me?
The town being the RTM and not a separate entity.
Well, the town exercises its approval of leases through the RTM. So that -- I understand you are -- Mr. Bergweger is making a legal interpretation of the language. What, as a practical matter, would happen if we approved this lease may be something that the -- you know, the RTM may never end up being involved in that, but on its face, it doesn't delegate authority. I think that was all the point was. Is that correct, Mr. Bergweger?
So, just to be clear, who then is approving the subleases?
The town.
But -- The town being which entity? The RTM?
Well, the town currently -- the town currently approves all leases through the RTM.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
All right.
I have to apologize to Margaret Freiberg. She pointed out I made a misstatement of fact. This particular motion was not before the Legislative and Rules. It was a different one that did not receive the second, and I apologize.
All right. And Mr. Harris.
Mr. Moderator, could you reread the language that is being proposed, going back to the Yes, the substitute language was paragraph 11 of the old lease, and it reads as follows: "The council shall not sublet the demised premises or any portion thereof, nor shall the lease be assigned. If the premises shall be deserted or vacated, the first selectman may declare the lease in default, and this lease shall expire and terminate." My point is that that does not say that the Arts Council may now, assuming that language were accepted, this motion, we would not be able to sublet at all to any of our current subtenants. It doesn't say we could license it to them. It says simply, we may not sublet. I think it's important to know that the Arts Council takes its responsibilities seriously. We currently sublet space to six nonprofit organizations: the Greenwich Symphony, Alliance Frances, the Choral Society, the Connecticut School of Music, Friendship Ambassadors, and the Greenwich Art Society. The idea of renting to for-profit organizations comes from a dance studio we have. It's one room. We make it available on an hourly basis for a fee of $45. Of the 40 hours in the week, there are two yoga programs. One has been using it for 30 years, that uses the space for one hour a week. That's two hours total. That comes out to one-twentieth of one room. Ballet programs fill up the other 38 hours. A number of them are approximately half are for-profit and a half not-for-profit. There's never been a prohibition against our leasing to a for-profit organization or individual. We rent gallery space on a regular basis to artists who certainly hope to sell their work. Yes, we hope they make a profit. We're fulfilling our goal of making arts available to the public. Thank you.
All right. I will call for the vote on the Freiberg motion to amend by deleting the current language of paragraph 10, and I will read one more time what is proposed to be substituted. Under the subletting and assignment paragraph, "The council shall not sublet the demised premises or any portion thereof, nor shall the lease be assigned. If the premises shall be deserted or vacated, the first selectman may declare the lease in default, and this lease shall expire and terminate." I'll ask -- so, if you are in favor of making this change, you should vote yes as the card comes around. If you want to leave the language as is in the proposed lease that was sent to us with the call documents for March, you should vote no. I ask the district chairs to please mark your voting cards, Freiberg motion to amend Arts Council lease, and proceed to poll your delegation. All right, as before, while that vote, and I ask that you conduct that expeditiously and quietly, because we will need to await the result before we could take a vote on the merits of item five. But while we are voting, we could continue if there are any comments that any individual would like to offer on the lease in general. Mr. Harris, do you care -- you had indicated a desire to speak in general. Do you -- where's Mr. Harris? Do you care to say anything further? All right, Mr. Adalberg? Okay. Anyone else care to offer comments on item five in general? Seeing none, we will briefly suspend the business of the meeting, awaiting the vote on the Freiberg motion to amend. This could be a time to rise and stretch.
Tom, Tom, Greco, Greco, Tom. Could you get Doug Wells on your way through and send him down here? Doug Wells, please. You gotta ask him.
Oh, where is Doug?
Oh, where is Doug?
Hi.
All right, will the members please take their seats so we can continue with the business of the meeting? The meeting will again come to order. I have the results of the vote on the Freiberg motion to amend paragraph 10 of the Arts Council lease. Those in favor, forty-eight; opposed, one thirty-one; abstaining, two. That item has failed. That motion has failed. Further discussion on item five. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number five as amended.
Do I have a question on that?
I'm sorry, Ms. Edwards?
Yes, another issue on five.
Well, I just called for further discussion.
Put my hand up.
Christine Edwards. I am not calling for the vote on item five yet, so please hold the voting cards. Christine Edwards, District Eight. Ms. Edwards.
Thank you. This is, Mr. Moderator, thank you, and to all my colleagues here and guests as well. Helma, if you, okay, one of the questions we have is that on the Arts Council on the second floor is a room that's supposed to be made available also for community uses. This is something which if you're having, which happens there twice a month, an angel choir, it's a nonprofit group, meets there. My question in terms of the leasing is, if you have a use like this which is totally nonprofit, right now they're being charged for it, and something of this nature which is going out to Nathaniel Witherell, to hospitals and such, to sing, and it is a community group, my question is why they, why they're being charged, which means that each of the members who are participating in that choir has to come up ante up twenty dollars each to be able to have that space. So I'm bringing this up as if we're going to have some rooms that are supposed to be made available for community use, and please note that this is usually done even with a corporation where they may have a conference room that is made freely available at no cost to members in the community who are doing nonprofit events, or even, I mean, nothing that one's being charged for. It just doesn't seem right to me that a community use room that's part of this grand enterprise should have a charge to it and therefore have people who are freely giving of their time charged to take that space. And I want to bring that up because if we're giving them free use of a space, right, guys? Shouldn't they also be allowing the community to make sense of that as well and to benefit? Because that's bringing people together in a community interaction that's going out and improving the value of our community. No one's making money here, but they're being charged to participate in a volunteer effect. So I want to bring that up as a let's-do-right-by-the-community situation, and I would like to have your support on that. Thank you.
Further discussion on item five. Mark Pruner, District Ten.
The whole point of a lease is to let the people use it the way they want to. The Greenwich Arts Council provides great services to our town. I don't think we need to micromanage it any more than we have. I'd like to move the question.
Further discussion on item five. Will the district chairs please mark your voting cards? Item number five as amended, and proceed to poll your delegation. Item nine now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that? David Tice, our selectman.
Mr. Moderator, at the appropriate time, I'd like to make a comment. Is that possible?
Thank you. Yep.
All right. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be appointed a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission for a term expiring three thirty-one seventeen, Frederick H. Brooks.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on item nine has been moved and seconded. Mr. Tice will first get the committee reports, and then I will come to you.
Thank you.
May we have the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with Candace Garthwaite, Chair of our Appointments Committee?
The Appointments Committee interviewed Frederick Brooks on February twenty-seventh. All districts were represented. Mr. Brooks is a retired sporting goods executive and active volunteer. His service includes local boards and commissions, and he has served on the national level, including advisory boards for the Carter, Reagan, and Bush administrations. He has also served as a director for public and private companies. Mr. Brooks has been a member of the Planning and Zoning Commission since 2007. He was active in the formulation of the most recent Plan of Conservation and Development. During our meeting, the delegate from District Three questioned Mr. Brooks about his vote on the proposed Lexus Regional Maintenance Center for Old Tracks Road. Mr. Brooks did not recollect how he voted. When he was reminded of his yes vote, and the vote was two in favor and three against, he was questioned about how such a large regional center would align with the Plan of Conservation of Development and its stated goal of preserving residential neighborhoods. Also during the meeting, the point was made that this project impacted three RTM districts. Mr. Brooks appeared caught off guard by the questioning. He did not directly answer the question from District Three and other questions that were similar in context. The context of the discussion was around how to preserve residential neighborhoods and promote commercial development in Greenwich. There was also considerable discussion around traffic and parking problems on Old Tracks Road. Michael Warner, who was, who is an RTM member and resident of the neighborhood near the proposed project, was in the audience and spoke against Mr. Brooks on the basis of his yes vote for the Lexus Regional Maintenance Center. The committee vote was four, four yes, seven against, one abstention. Districts One, Eight, Nine, and Twelve voted yes. District One noted the quality of Mr. Brooks' CV.
Thank you. Peter Burke, Chair of our Land Use Committee.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, fellow members. The Land Use Committee met last Monday night. All districts were represented. We had Mr. Frederick Brooks on this item. He's, as Ms. Garthwaite just mentioned, he's being reappointed as a full member of the Planning and Zoning Commission. He has served on the commission for seven years, and if approved, this will be his fourth term. Mr. Brooks made a presentation. He began with a general statement on the need for greater clarity and predictability in land use regulations, both for the benefit of applicants and opponents. He then went into detail on his presentation before the Appointments Committee, submitting a written explanation of his, of his performance there. The gist of his presentation was that his vote on the proposed Lexus project had been misunderstood. His position was related to the fact that he felt the application should have been submitted directly to the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals as provided, as provided as a special exception since the Zoning Board of Appeals is solely responsible for automobile repair uses in the, in the zone where Lexus was proposing to build. Hence, his yes vote was essentially a vote to remand the application to the Zoning Board of Appeals. He noted, he also noted that given the large number of cases coming before planning and zoning, he didn't recall how he had voted on the issue. It had been several years. He was critical of the Appointments Committee process, noting that his primary opponent should have submitted his questions in advance or alerted him that he was going to use this Lexus application. He emphasized that the application had, had in fact failed by two votes, so his single vote was not a deciding vote as had been characterized. A lengthy discussion ensued. Michael Warner of District Three, who's not a member of the Land Use Committee, delivered a reluctant but forceful presentation of reasons why Mr. Brooks should not be reappointed. His neighborhood had hired its own traffic engineer who testified that the Lexus project would have had profound impacts on traffic and public safety. Strong statements of support for Mr. Brooks were delivered by our first selectman, Peter Tessie, and by Donald Heller, Chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission. Mr. Heller was noted that he was angry about the process that Mr. Brooks had been unfairly targeted at the Appointments Committee. Our vote, the Land Use Committee vote on, on this item was eight in favor, three opposed, one abstention. So the no votes were as follows. The member from District Three, which is where the Lexus was applying to build, stated that the candidate had failed to express a clear vision for Greenwich. The delegate from District Nine questioned the process and said the commission needs a change. And the delegate from District Ten, who is a former chairman of the Planning and Zoning Commission and a former member of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals, said that Mr. Brooks had misunderstood the roles of planning and zoning and the Zoning Board of Appeals, and that moreover, as the P O C D, the Plan of Conservation and Development, is a guide for the town's future and a document that Mr. Brooks had helped to prepare and which the RTM had adopted, it was puzz, she found it puzzling that he gave preliminary approval to the Lexus plan. The Lexus plan was inconsistent, in her view, with the Plan of Conservation and Development with respect to residential character, neighborhood protection, traffic safety, and commercial development. The member noted that Mr. Brooks had served the town well, but it was time for another to take his place. So once again, the land use vote on Mr. Brooks was eight in favor, three opposed, and one abstention.
Thank you. Discussion on item nine. David Tice, our selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. Mr. Burke, you gave me a good segue when somebody suggested it's time for someone else to, to take over. Let me say first of all, that as a third-generation Greenwich resident, maintaining the character of our community, to me and my associates on the board, is very, very important. Let me also say to Peter Burke's point and the other person that mentioned that it was time for change, that we take great pride on a Board of Selectmen at taking the time that it takes to find and nominate the right people to serve on our many boards and commissions. It's not an easy task, and I think that in order to fairly judge someone, in this case, Mr. Brooks, you have to judge his work in its entire context instead of one, one issue. Because we don't have a line of people in a doorway down there waiting to take his place, or many other places for that matter. So I salute you, Mr. Brooks, for your, for your time and service and commitment to the community, and I would urge everybody here tonight to vote in favor of, of Mr. Brooks because in the, in the full and final analysis, he's done a great job for our community. So I want to thank you for that publicly. That's all I have to say.
Peter Tessie, our first selectman.
Good evening, Mr. Moderator, and ladies and gentlemen of the RTM. I just wanted to reiterate comments that I made at the Land Use Committee last week in that, you know, we as a community pride ourselves on a government driven by volunteers. And whether you're elected or appointed, I hope we all share the common denominator that we want to be evaluated based upon the full body of our work. We are elected to make judgments, judgments on behalf of our fellow residents. I for one, and I hope you share the same thought, that you want to be judged by the electorate on your full tenure of service in the matters that come before you and how you've chosen to act upon them, not just one. And that's the standard I think we should apply to Mr. Brooks. I for one did not support the application for the Lexus dealership and went and spoke to the P and C against it. I felt it was not in the interest of the neighborhoods and created a much greater regional center and impact locally for our communities. At the same time, I understand that each member of the commission evaluates these applications on their merits and has specific reasons for why they're casting their votes in the particular way. And so Mr. Brooks' vote was just one of hundreds, and when I look at his service and the dedication and the quality of the man, I think he warrants renomination. When one looks at his resume and sees the depth of experience, international, national experience appointed by bipartisan administrations, one has to say, wow, what community in America could point to someone of this man's caliber who's actually volunteering their time to it? So I hope tonight you'll share with us a common view that we all, as elected officials and as appointed officials, really want to be judged on our full record and not just one issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion on item nine. Michael Warner, District Three.
Good evening. I'm from District Three, and as you heard, we were deeply involved with the Lexus issue, which is, was a move by Lexus to establish a regional repair center, taking their operations from Arch Street and moving them to local streets, two-lane streets in, near Old Track Road on a property owned by Greenwich, and taking their operations from Portchester and also expanding and relocating them to the same place on Old Track Road. When these developers approached the Planning and Zoning Commission, they come fully prepared and they have deep pockets. They have a cadre of land use attorneys, they have traffic engineers, they usually have a traffic study that's two or three inches thick, they have architects, and they frankly will catch a community by surprise, as they did us. Fortunately, in this case, after about a year or year and a half of many late-night meetings, Lexus lost their, lost their attempt to win approval by a vote of three to two, as you've heard. What came out in terms of the reasons why Lexus lost that vote was because the traffic study conducted by the town, in the language of the traffic study, the consultant said that the amount of traffic at peak hours actually crashed the model that they used. It was, it was a slam dunk against Lexus. The other thing that helped us was the language in the code that all The other thing that helped us was the language in the code that all indicated that residential neighborhoods are primary. And the one thing that really helped us all was a document that you helped formulate, the Plan of Conservation and Development. That was our document that gives direction to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and it was very clear about commercial development and developers, per se, versus residential areas. And it comes out clearly in favor of residents and residential communities. And as the first selectman said, he was at the front of the line, saying, this doesn't make sense. We have to question why, why we would even consider this. So it was a big issue. It was a landmark issue. And we feel lucky that we won that battle, but we were puzzled, and still are, as to why Mr. Brooks would vote in favor of Lexus. In going through this journey, what I learned was the following. I learned that words matter, and the P O C D that you developed matters. And that was constantly referred to in these debates. And we had hoped that P O C D would be a document that we could hold up and stand behind. And it turned out that it wasn't the case, in the case of Mr. Brooks' vote. The other thing we learned was that the R T M matters. We were caught by surprise in District Three, but we found that, early on, we had representatives, the chairwoman of District Ten was standing in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission and arguing against Lexus. And then we found moms from District Two who argued against Lexus because of the proximity to the Boys and Girls Clubs and the Hamilton Avenue School. This is a congested area. And we found that, when we hired a traffic engineer, not to do any studies, but simply to review the work that was already done, we found that we received donations from District Seven and District Nine. And they stood with us, and they spoke in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission. And we sat, we stood for them when District Seven was confronted by the Tollgate Retirement Community effort. We were there at Inlands and Wetlands meetings. When Mercedes wanted to expand on Edgewood Avenue, we attended those meetings on their behalf. And we found that when we stick together, we had more weight. And we also found that the vote of each commissioner matters. There are only five commissioners, and each commissioner has enormous power. And I stand before you, not because I want to look back at a single, important landmark vote, but because I'm thinking of the future. What about, you know, we all think we live in a neighborhood that's safe until we find out we're not. And what will the next major developer bring to us? Now, it's been said that this was just a procedural vote. It didn't really matter.
All right. Mr. Warner, I see someone rising. You can interrupt this speaker for a point of order. Is there a point of order?
Can I just question the relevance? Are we talking about Lexus or are we talking about?
All right. I think the point is well taken, that the issue is the appointment of Mr. Brooks to planning and zoning. Mr. Warner, you do have some latitude on that issue, but I hope you will take into account the sentiment behind that point of order. I will rule that it is not well taken, but with the hope that you will speak about Mr. Brooks in general and not give us the details of all the other development projects in town and this particular one.
Will do. The details matter because they're so overwhelming, and we don't understand the vote. Mr. Brooks and others have told us his vote was just procedural. However, if you look at the facts of the matter, why do all land use attorneys in town first submit a preliminary application? They submit a preliminary application, and why is it on television? And why do they spend all their money in a preliminary application on traffic surveys and setbacks? They do that because the preliminary application is important. So when someone says that it was just a procedural vote, you have to take that against what reality is. And reality is that the attorneys in town consider that a very important vote. And once it passes the preliminary stage and it goes to the Zoning Board of Appeals, I can't think of a vote that came back from the Zoning Board of Appeals, which only deals with use, that was not passed by the Planning and Zoning Commission. So for that reason, I think the consequences of approving Mr. Brooks weighed against the harm that could be done in just one vote. The harm lasts for 50 or 100 years. A bad vote, if we had Lexus in the middle of a congested part of town with the traffic studies, it would be a nightmare. And some people have said that. So I would ask you not to vote for Mr. Brooks, and not because he hasn't been up late doing good service for the town for seven years. It's a brutal job, and we should appreciate the work he has done and the philanthropy he has done. But I worry about the future, and I hope you will vote against Mr. Brooks. Thank you very much.
Further discussion on Item Nine. Dr. Carl Carlson of District One.
Mr. Moderator, members of the R T M. I serve on the Appointments Committee for District One. I was the first person to vote for Mr. Brooks, and I gave a small speech in favor of Mr. Brooks before the Appointments Committee. And I gave another speech in favor of Mr. Brooks to the Land Use Committee. I'd like to make a little bit of a plea to you tonight, to bring Mr. Brooks back to planning and zoning. I have known Mr. Brooks for a number of years, maybe not so deeply, but what I detected is that Mr. Brooks is, in my judgment, one of the ablest people through the years to serve in the Planning and Zoning Committee. I think that Mr. Warner does have a case against Mr. Brooks on one item. I would have not voted the way Mr. Brooks did that night. But I think we should look at this in perspective, in a big-picture perspective, for a man who, I think, is very able and has made good contribution to planning and zoning. It was not his motion that he voted for, he just supported a motion that Mr. Maitland made. In terms of my perspective of Mr. Brooks, the front page of Greenwich Time yesterday, I showed him to be the supercival David of the town of Greenwich, which is saying a lot to compare him with that magnificent English collector of Chinese porcelain. I think we can be generous tonight to an able man who has had an exceptionally rich career, and we can return him. And perhaps we don't agree with one decision that he made, but I think it would be quite a pity for us to lose him. Thank you.
Further discussion on Item Nine. Is it Mr. Robbins, District One?
Thank you very much. Fellow members, unlike many of the other speakers here, I'm not a longtime Greenwich person. I've only lived here really a fairly short amount of time. And what I've heard tonight is that we have before us a person who has given long and distinguished service to this community in his position that he's now sitting in, even acknowledged, even acknowledged by the person who spoke to speak against him. Even if one would assume, and which I can't because it is difficult to decide on such issues at a distance, we're not talking about one issue, we're talking about one person, and we're talking about, as everyone says, the future of Greenwich. I very much hope that everyone here will join with me in voting for Mr. Brooks.
Lucy Krasner, District Five.
Good evening. I am not currently on the Appointments Committee, but for many, many years, I'm not even sure how many, perhaps 25, I was on the Appointments Committee. I would point out that rarely, rarely, it's, in fact, difficult to remember when, the Appointments Committee has guided us, after a long, thoughtful consideration of a meeting, to vote against somebody, and their vote was four in favor, seven opposed, one abstention. The issue that was brought up by Mr. Brooks, that somebody should have presented questions in advance, is thoroughly unrealistic. You really never know what comes up by the person and their presentation. At the Appointments Committee, you're always asked, you know, what is going on in the planning and zoning, what issues are, you know, what have you been involved in, to get the person talking and why they should be renominated. And so the idea that Mr. Brooks felt that a person should have submitted questions upfront, I think is thoroughly unrealistic, and not familiar with the process here at all. I personally think we should absolutely take the guidance of the Appointments Committee that is there to guide us in regard to appointments and vote against Mr. Brooks, because he made a substantial contribution to the Bruce Museum that was noted in the paper yesterday, I think is thoroughly and completely irrelevant to their consideration, which I understand it was not there, was lengthy, but I think their guidance should be heated, and we should vote against Mr. Brooks.
Further discussion on Item Nine. Donald Heller, Chair of the Planning and Zoning Commission.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and I'm pleased to be here and to be heard. First and foremost, there's a reason why the Land Use Committee switched and turned over the vote from the Appointments Committee. One was four to seven against, and the other was eight and four in favor. What made the difference? The difference was very simple, that the facts came out. And let me explain, if I may, take a couple of minutes of time, how this works at P and Z. Sometimes, a case ordinarily goes direct to the Board of Appeals. This particular case that we're talking about, the so-called Lexus case, should have gone to the Board of Appeals. But the applicant has a choice, he could send it to us, and we have to accept every application sent to us legally. We accepted it and tossed it around quite a bit. Then we had a vote. It was a very, very simple vote. Should we send it to the Board of Appeals, which it belonged to in the first place? And two favored that. Others, including myself, said, let's not bother, let's get rid of it now. So we voted against it, and it never went to the Board of Appeals. Those, including Mr. Brooks, who voted to send it to the Board of Appeals, knew that in the end, if the Board of Appeals approves it, it has to come back to us. That's what's meant by procedural. Now, I have a lot of respect from the people from District Three. I think they treated it and spent, did a lot of their homework, and they did a very good job, but they just didn't understand. And I must say that Mr. Brooks did not do a good job, under the tension of the moment, explaining it. And I'm just amazed that people still think that today, even though we explained it carefully, which is why, which is why the Land Use Group overturned the Appointments recommendation. Now, to carry that to the next point, Lexus was defeated, and a housing project went in there, right next to the Equinox Building. That housing project has 63 apartments, including nine affordable, and it helped to turn around that whole area there, including underground parking. That decision, Mr. Brooks supported 100 percent. And the people, with all due respect to District Three, should be very, very happy of how that whole area turned out. That brings me to a quick comment about the P O C D, because I was directly involved with the P O C D, and I served as chairman. Fred was a major contributor, and this central planning report, we have to all realize, is a guide. It's not a law, it's a guide. It's a statement of where we want Greenwich to go, namely, as primarily a residential community. The regulations we write are always meant to be consistent with the P O C D. We never want a Trump tower in Greenwich, the one that's in Stamford, even if it's supported by a deal, so to speak, being offered in return. That's not who we are. Now, some of what we deal with is in controversy. Some of the differences come to light, and that is why, in the board and the commission, we have a diversity of talent. You people tonight approved an engineer, an architect, and a lawyer. The diversity of what we have is our strength. Mr. Brooks adds to that strength. And the reason why he adds to that strength is because he's a very diversified businessman, and in particular, helps us on legal matters. Now, I'd like to take this advantage of telling you just two examples of our planning and zoning, and then fit it into how Fred is involved. We've, and excuse me if I read some of this, because I'm learning some of the technical terms even today. We are very involved in the flooding issue, which many of you in one or two districts in particular are concerned. Our general premise is that the owner of our property in a flood-hazard area should be able to build a house that's commensurate with the value of his property or her property, as viewed by the town assessor, in a way that's compliant, at the same time, with regulations. We will shortly bring to everyone, to everyone's attention here, our program for some relief from the new FEMA flood maps. Secondly, we must always be aware that decisions we make can sometimes affect the town positively or negatively for many years. We are examining, for example, an application just came in for major change at the Morgan Moving and Storage Building. Many of you, I'm sure, know where that is, right at the foot of Greenwich Avenue. This location is, in some sense, the entrance to Greenwich. Planning is required as we examine the redesign and usage of this soon-to-be-proposed new building, to make sure it conforms to the towntown zoning, and the parking, and bulk, and traffic, and so on. It's the combination of planning and zoning is what we're all about. Mr. Brooks is intimately involved in our decisions that'll be forthcoming in that area, so vital to our needs. To sum up, ladies and gentlemen, you can depend on Fred, as you've depended on him in the past. I appreciate very much the negative comments made, but please understand, he is not pro-Lexus or pro-anything-else, but pro-the-town. And thank you very much.
Tom Cornelius, District Three.
Mr. Moderator, can I make a motion to limit debate? Can we limit the time of the meeting?
Yes, you can. All right, it has been moved and seconded to limit debate to three minutes per speaker. The motion to limit debate is not itself debatable and requires a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of limiting debate? Now, let me ask, is this for the balance of the meeting or for this particular item?
This idea.
Balance of the meeting.
All right, for the balance of the meeting. To limit all speakers to three minutes, if you are in favor of that, you will vote yes. All those in favor of the motion to limit debate, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion has carried. All right, Mr. Canilius, you're on the clock.
I guess I came at the wrong time, but...
Yes, it is.
Anyway, my name is Tom Canilius. I'm Chairman of District 3. I'm on the Appointments Committee. I've been on the Appointments Committee for about five years. And on the Appointments Committee, you get to see all the different candidates come in front of us who want to be on the Commissions or Committees, and some of them come up, maybe three, I've seen people come up before me five, six times, so you get to know who's who, and, you know, you get a read for people after they're interviewed several times. Mr. Brooks was asked an innocent question about Lexus, which he thought he was confused on, so we gave him the benefit of the doubt. But Lexus is only the, the beginning of the issue. The issue is, I hear complaints from many people about the regulations in town, the different FAR requirements, grade plane development, the people in District 6 complaining about giving variances to high-rise dwellings where their house is low. So everybody, over the past four years, has been just very disconcerned about wanting new regulations and change, and make it simpler and everything else. We have two great alternates that are sitting in the wings, that have clear visions of what they want, what the town should want, as far as making changes on the Commission. Mr. Brooks unfortunately did not have a very clear plan. He was asked both times, in Appointments and in Land Use, what his vision was for the town. He didn't really have a vision, and I don't think he has the expertise to change the regulations, or to be any kind of partner in regulating new and making up new regulations. Mr. Fox and Ms. Raymer have very clear visions, and they've talked about how to make changes, what can be done, and they're sitting in the wings, you know, not doing anything right now. Perhaps, if it's possible, Mr. Brooks could become an alternate, and let Mr. Fox and Ms. Raymer step up and make a little change. It's time for change on the Commission, and that's the bottom line. I envy Mr. Brooks. I see him, and a great, great guy, but it's time to do something better for the town, and I couldn't stand here, in all honesty, and say, "I wouldn't want my fellow Greenwich citizens to go up in front of the Commission the way it is now." I would rather see a stronger Commission built with Mr. Fox and Ms. Raymer on, on a full voting term. Thank you.
Joan Caldwell, District 10.
Mr. Moderator, members in town, ladies. Some of you who have been around for a while will remember that in an earlier life, I was involved with the development of two very large tracts of land in Greenwich. One was about 1,500 acres, the other was over 2,000. And in both instances, I appeared, people with me, organizations with me, before the Planning and Zoning Commission. In the first of these cases, which was in 1972, it was David versus Goliath. We were David. Goliath was the Xerox Corporation with millions of dollars that it was quite willing to spend. And we had five Commissioners, about whom we knew nothing personal. We hoped that they understood how serious this development would be in northwest Greenwich, if allowed. Fortunately, after much investigation and all sorts of reports, the Commissioners zeroed in on the one factor that is the most important in any major development, and Lexus was major, don't kid yourself, traffic. The traffic reports of the applicant were flawed from one end to the other, and we were able to find a traffic consultant who could poke the holes that needed to be poked. I think the District 3 people probably did the same thing in Lexus. The five Commissioners in 1972 listened, and the vote was five against. We, the citizens, we, the residents, had prevailed. On the other side of town, many, many years later, a man proposed to build a residential community, of what we thought, or what the community thought, might be 100 houses on 10 acres each. Turned out to be many fewer than 100 houses, but it still generated traffic. And the Planning and Zoning Commission that set and heard those hearings recognized the impact of traffic on the backcountry roads, and held us to a very, very tight line. Believe me, I know, I was on the developer's side, and we were working hard to meet the demands that the town put upon us. Traffic cannot be underestimated, and the Commissioners must know it. Lexus, if it had gone through, would have affected drastically Districts 3, 9, 10, 7, 4, and quite possibly a piece of 2. That's a big piece of our community, and it wasn't a technical decision. It was a life decision for this town.
Further discussion on Item 9. Mr. Von Kaiseling, District 8.
Thank you, Mr. Moderator. I'm very reluctant to address you again on this, but I think there are some things that have to be said. I, as you know, have been on the Appointments Committee up until this last term, just now, this January, for at least as much time or more than my friend Lucy Krasner. Both of us, I think, did an excellent job, and it's a difficult one. I want you to refocus. The issues here are not the issues we're deciding on. I got out, every time there was a hearing on Lexus, my friend Mike Warner called me up, kept me informed, I came down, and I spoke vehemently, and I think you all know how vehemently I can speak, against this project, for all the reasons that our great Moderator Pro-Tom said. It was a very bad project, and it was a huge imposition to that neighborhood, to the south end of town, and not only that, the trans, the east-west traffic downtown from Greenwich through to Byram, that's the main artery. Absolutely inappropriate. Nobody's arguing that. Even Mr. Brooks wasn't arguing that. He's explained to you he wasn't arguing that. His was talking, as the Chairman of P&amp;Z said, "A procedural issue." Now, if you're going to talk about a situation that's highly legally loaded, when you're talking about decisions that are very likely are going to be taken on appeal to the courts and the higher courts, and appealed on and on and up, because, as Ms. Caldwell said, there are millions of dollars at stake in this. There's all the money to be made by the applicant, and all the money to lose by the neighborhood. There's no question about it. If you're in that kind of a fight, you have to proceed very, very cautiously. You don't want the murderer to get off on a technicality. And that's what the Board of Planning and Zoning is very, very concerned with and aware of, as they're trying to do the straightforward business. I've known Mr. Brooks all the time that he's been on it. I don't care if he's an expert in clay horses. It has no, nothing to do with this, or the price of eggs. I don't care about whether he plays golf or doesn't play golf. I've watched, I don't play golf, and I don't have clay horses. I've watched that P&amp;Z intently over the years, both as a community representative in front of it, and as many of you know, I've spoken for any one of your neighborhoods in front of this Committee, about, this Commission about it. I know this Commission, I know the people on it, I know Mr. Brooks. Mr. Brooks is a very, very thoughtful man. He was part, he had very important and very serious responsibilities in his life in government, in other words. He knows how to balance and to be subtle, and work the system to our favor. To condemn him for his expertise is absolutely laughable and juvenile.
All right, Mr. Von Kaiseling, time is up.
I agree with District 3, but I don't agree with the case against Mr. Brooks. Please, re-nominate him.
Further discussion on Item 9. Mr. Brogan.
The previous question?
All right.
Second?
No. I wanted to give Mr. Brooks a chance. Did you want to address? No? Okay. All right. The motion for the previous question has been moved and seconded. It is a motion to cut off debate. It is not itself debatable and requires a two-thirds majority to pass. If you want to immediately take up the vote on Item 9, you should vote yes. All those in favor of the motion for the previous question, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. That motion has carried. Will the District Chairs, please mark your voting cards, Item Number 9, and proceed to poll your delegation. Did I announce the result of the vote on Item 5? All right, this is the Greenwich Arts Council, this has amended. Those in favor, 167. Opposed, 13. Abstaining, 1. That item has carried. All right, the next item to come before us is one of several remaining appointments that we anticipate will be postponed. I would like to propose that we somehow expedite and combine all of those appointments. There are two remaining separate items that we need to take up on the merits. So I would suggest that we suspend the rules to combine those appointments that we have heard will face a motion to postpone. Those are Items 10, 12, 17, 18, 20, 21, and 22. Is there such a motion to suspend the rules to combine those for voting purposes? All right. We need a two-thirds majority to pass. All those in favor of suspending the rules to combine Items 10, 12, 17, 18, 20, 21, and 22 for voting purposes, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That motion has carried. So, we'll now take up that group, and I'll ask our, the Chair of our Appointments Committee to simply present each of those items, and we'll, although combined items can be subject to full Committee reports and discussion, I assume we'll waive those until these come back. So, Ms. Garthwaite? Is Candace Garthwaite?
Hi.
Okay, thank you. The first item is Item 10. Oh, yes, I'm sorry, Drew Marzullo, our Selectman, is going to present this, and then, thank you very much.
Mr. Moderator, resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be reappointed to the, a member of the Nathaniel Witherall Board of Directors, a term expiring 3/31/17, Christopher Antherlow.
All right, will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 10 has been moved and seconded. Mr. Marzullo, are you going to present the, oh, no, you're, we only have one other. Who's presenting? Let's just hold off on the Committee reports. 12? Drew Marzullo, with the resolution on Item 12.
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Board of Selectmen be reappointed a member of the Planning and Zoning Board of Appeals, expiring 3/31/18, David Weisbrad.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item 12 has been moved and seconded. All right, the remaining are offered by our Appointments Committee. So, Ms. Garthwaite, could you present those to us, and then I'll come back, and if any Committee wants to give a report, we can take that up then. So this would be, the first one would be Item 17, would be the next of the combined items.
Okay, hold on. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed member of the Labor Contracts Committee for the term expiring 12/31/15, David W. Detchin.
All right, thank you. That being offered on behalf of our Appointments Committee is now before us. Item 18?
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed member of the Labor Contracts Committee for the term expiring 12/31/15, Stephen Rubin.
Resolution on Item 18 is now before us. Item 20?
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed alternate member of the Labor Contracts Committee for the term expiring 12/31/15.
The resolution on Item 20 is now before us. Item 21? Wait a minute. Is there a problem?
Resolve... No.
Did you, did you offer item, Robert Burns, Item 20?
Oh, did I not give his name? Okay, sorry. Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed alternate member of the Labor Contracts Committee for the term expiring 12/31/15.
Robert Burns?
Robert Burns.
All right, the resolution on Item 20 is now before us. Item 21?
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed member of the Labor Contracts Committee for the term expiring 12/31/15, Michael Gerald Wasick.
Resolution on Item 21 is now before us. And the final combined item is Item 22?
Resolve that the following named person nominated by the Appointments Committee be appointed member of the Labor Contracts Committee for the term expiring 12/31/15, Joan M. Caldwell.
Resolution on Item 22 is now before us. Now, I understand the motions to postpone have to do with unavailability for interviews. Is that correct?
Not via the Appointments Committee.
Pardon me?
We interviewed all of these candidates.
Okay. Then, is there a Committee that wants to offer a single motion to postpone? Mr. Warner, Chairman of our Finance Committee?
In view of the fact that we did not interview these, I propose a motion that we postpone these until the April meeting.
Okay. That being offered, is this on behalf of the Finance Committee?
On behalf of Finance.
Because you didn't take up 10 and 12, I'll ask, is there a second to postpone each of these to our April meeting? It has now been moved and seconded to postpone Items 10, 12, 17, 18, 20, 21, and 22 to our April meeting. I will call for a voice vote. All those in favor of postponing Items 10, 12, 17, 18, 20, 21, and 22 to our April meeting, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
That motion has carried. Item 15 now comes before us. May we have the resolution on that item? This is the Senior Tax Relief Ordinance. Peter Tessie, our first Selectman.
Mr. Moderator, and ladies and gentlemen of the RTM, Item Number 15, to consider an act upon the following resolution requested by the first Selectman and approved by the Board of Selectmen, proposed RTM resolution extending Greenwich Municipal Code Article 12-6.1, Property Tax Relief for Seniors, now therefore be ordained and enacted by the RTM that the ordinance entitled Article 12-6.1, Property Tax Relief for Seniors, is hereby amended and is attached, and it is the same as it appears on the call.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? The resolution on Item 15 has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports on this item? Alexis Vulgaris, Chair of our Health and Human Services Committee?
Good evening. The Health and Human Services Committee had the benefit of John Crary, Town Administrator, Lori Contadino, Director of Commission on Aging, and Lori Jackson, a board member of the Commission on Aging, come and present this item to us last week. The ordinance was originally adopted by the town in 2000, and was last revisited in 2010. The ordinance before us this evening is the same as it was in 2010. While the explanatory notes provide extensive information, I just wanted to highlight a few of the details of the program. The town of Greenwich administers a tax credit program for senior homeowners age 65 or older who meet, who meet the eligibility guidelines, and all of those guidelines have been included in the explanos. An eligible senior can receive a tax credit ranging from a maximum of about $2,200 to a minimum of about $588 based on their gross income. And a gross income can range from as low as $25,500 to a maximum of $64,000. In addition to the eight, and, I'm sorry, and there are quite a few income steps in the process, so depending on your individual income, there's a range of eligibility amounts. In addition to the age and income requirements, applications must, applicants must demonstrate that property is their primary residence, that they have been a Greenwich taxpayer for at least one year, and that no delinquent taxes are owed to the town. The residence must also not have an assessed value of more than about $1.2 million on the current grant list. Last year, 673 senior residents received tax relief. The average age of the recipient was 81 years old, and they have lived in Greenwich for an average of about 41 years. The budget for this program is $905,000. To date, $881,000 has been spent. The program has never exceeded its budgeted amount, but if it did, there would be a prioritizing of need to determine which residents, among all of the applicants, were the most in need of the tax relief. There is also a tax deferral option in the ordinance, but to date, no Greenwich senior has taken advantage of that option, and this is consistent with data that other surrounding towns that participate in the program report. Homeowners would much prefer to avoid having a lien on their property, and that's why it's either or, so they... it's either or, so they applied for the credit as opposed to the deferral. One observation that our committee made was that the Assessor's Office publishes two flyers describing the program, but is unclear how many eligible seniors are actually aware of the program. Our committee suggested that perhaps when tax bills are mailed out, that these flyers be included for all residents so that information can be widely disseminated. Lori Contadino said she would follow up with this suggestion regarding its feasibility. Our vote was 10-0-0 with Districts One and Four absent. Thank you.
Thank you. Doug Wells, Chair of our Legislative and Rules Committee.
Our vote was 11-0-0. The only thing I want to add is that Barry Rickert is a member of the Finance Committee, and he afforded a, an income tax grid, or an income grid that provided for a smoothing of the credits. Some in our committee were concerned that because there's only three brackets, there are significant decreases in the amount of the credits from each income bracket. It seemed to make more sense to create more of a blended decrease in, in the credits that are available by making $6,000 increments rather than 12,000 or $14,000 increments. This would serve to provide a disincentive for people to under-report their income and would also create a situation where you wouldn't take such a big hit if you just happened to be on the wrong side of one of those income brackets. We spoke of this to the people from the commission, and they thought it was a good idea. They will consider it in future years, so we hope they will consider it. I think it's a fairer way to provide income tax, tax credits for these people.
Thank you. Mike Warner with the Finance Committee report.
The Finance Committee took this up on March 3rd. Our vote was 11-0-0. We noted that, two things, that it was a very successful program, and there was little discussion with Lori Contadino. The other item was, just as Mr. Wells mentioned, we thought that more brackets would be, would be better to smooth the income categories, and recommended that they take a look at that for the following year. But the final vote was 11-0-0.
Thank you. Discussion on Item Fifteen. Will the district chairs, please mark your voting cards, Item Fifteen, and proceed to poll your delegation? I have the result on, of the vote on Item Nine, which is the appointment of Frederick, Frederick Brooks to Planning and Zoning Commission. Those in favor, 108; opposed, 53; abstaining, 14. That item has carried. The final item to come before us tonight, Item Twenty-Five. Do we have a resolution on that item? This is the Nathaniel Witherall appropriation.
My name is Stephen Solar. I'm the vice-chair of the Building Committee, the Town Building Committee for Nathaniel Witherall. I introduce for your consideration the resolution in the form set forth as Item Twenty-Five in the call for this meeting of the RTM.
Thank you. Will a member please move the adoption of the resolution? Resolution on Item Twenty-Five has been moved and seconded. May we have the reports of the committees that considered this, beginning with our Health and Human Services Committee, Alexis Vulgaris.
Good evening. Stephen Solar and Lloyd Banksen, Witherall Board Members, and Alan Brown, Director of Witherall, and Ray Augustine, Director of Financial Operations, presented this item to our committee last week. As we all know, Witherall is in the midst of Project Renew, and with any large construction project, especially when the building you are working on is over 100 years old, unforeseen costs arise. In this case, there were some cost overruns associated with environmental issues, costs to remove rock, and problems that arise when you open a wall in a 100-year-old building and you have absolutely no idea what you're going to find behind it. The $950,000 appropriation Witherall is requesting is slated to be used for very practical and necessary projects. The relocation of Cathay Witherall, tower balcony enclosures, tower nourishment stations, and ceiling repairs in the nursing and tower stations. While Witherall is seeking an additional $950,000 to complete this project, they have been successful on two other financial fronts. The Friends of Witherall...
Ms. Vulgaris, please. Let me just ask for quiet, and let's pay attention to the speaker, please.
The Friends of Nathaniel Witherall have raised over $3.5 million in private donations to offset costs associated with Project Renew, and in June of 2013, the state announced that Witherall qualified for a state historic tax credit of $4.5 million. This credit will be in the form of a certificate that can be transferred to investor, allowing the town to syndicate and sell the tax credit and realize the cash. Typically, the credits sell for about 80 cents on the dollar, so the town should gain about $3.5 million, $3.5 million from the sale. Witherall has identified a buyer for these credits, but the identity of the buyer has not been made public yet. While the BET has the final say on how this $3.5 million is spent, in theory, some of it could be used to reimburse for this $950,000 expenditure. Our committee felt that the board and staff of Witherall continue to be very mindful of expenses related to Project Renew, and that they have consistently tried to offset these expenses through private fundraising and through their determined efforts to secure historic tax credits. Therefore, our vote was 9-0-0 in support of the appropriation, with Districts One, Two, and Four absent. Thank you.
Thank you. And with the report of our Finance Committee, it's Chair, Michael Warner.
The Finance Committee took this up March 3rd. We had with us David Ormsby, the National Witherall Board Chairman, Lloyd Banksen, a board member, and Alan Brown, Executive Director. For the reasons just stated, we voted 10-0-1 in favor of this item. We noted in our discussion that for all its setbacks, the projects seem to be closely managed. The, the tax credit amount was a, was a factor that we thought was important as part of our vote, and for that reason, we voted 10-0-1. Thank you.
Thank you. Discussion on Item Twenty-Five. Will the district chairs, please mark your voting cards, Item Twenty-Five, and proceed to poll your delegation? This being the final item to come before us tonight, we will need to await the result of that vote before proceeding to adjourn. So I ask that our district chairs please expedite the tally. I have the result of the vote on Item Fifteen. That is the Senior Tax Relief Ordinance. Those in favor, 154; opposed, 2; abstaining, 0. That item has carried. We have one more vote to count up. I have the result on the vote of our final item, Item Twenty-Five, the appropriation of $950,000 for Project Renew at Nathaniel Witherall. Those in favor, 145; opposed, 2; abstaining, 1. That item has carried. There being no further business to come before the meeting, an absent objection, this meeting stands adjourned upon unanimous consent. Thank you all for coming. Have a safe trip home.